All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I’m Jean Ritchie, and I will be the moderator for the Santa Barbara City Council Candidate Forum this afternoon. I welcome you on the behalf of the League of Women Voters Education Fund and our co-sponsor, Santa Barbara Village. And we’d like to recognize the Santa Barbara Village Executive Director Naomi Kovacs, who’s back right here.[37.79][37.79](APPLAUSE). For this co-sponsorship, the League of Women Voters is nonpartisan and welcomes both women and men as members. We need to support nor oppose political parties or candidates for office. We conduct these forums so you may have the opportunity to see and hear the candidates, ask some questions, and make up your own minds. Tonight, we are pleased to present the candidates for running for the City Council of Santa Barbara. There are cards at the table, and I think they were passed out, for your questions to be submitted to the candidates during the second part of the forum. If you need a card, just signal, and somebody will bring you one. It’s important that you state your topic at the top of the card, and only one question on each card, please, and be brief. The cards will be reviewed by a panel, and questions will be grouped by subject. When your question is ready, just hold it up. The candidates have reviewed the form, the format for tonight, for this afternoon’s forum, which will be as follows. First, each participant will give a one-minute opening statement, and we’ve drawn cards, and Mr. Jordan will start. He drew note number one before anybody else, not very many other had a chance to draw a number. And then we’ll rotate through the candidates, so each will have an opportunity to be first and to be last. They’ll be asked three questions. They’ve given these questions in advance, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. Then we’ll take a break and allow our volunteers to collect your cards, and then we’ll ask the questions submitted by you. We’ll allow one minute for each response, and we should be able to ask three to five questions. And finally, we’ll stop questions by 2:40 PM in order to give the candidates an opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement. We have a team of timers sitting up here in front, who will give time signals to the candidates, and we ask you to hold your applause till the end, so that we can get as many questions answered by the candidates in the time we have. So we’ll now begin with opening statements, and we’ll start with Mr. Jordan. And then we’ll go down alphabetically that way and come back up here.
Good afternoon. Thank you for hosting the event. It’s always great. This is always traditionally one of the best forums that I’ve watched in the past. It’s a little different to be on this side of the table. My name’s Mike Jordan. I’m running for council. I bring a unique background, I feel, to running for council. I’m a local insurance agent, who’s also in my fourth term of serving the city as a planning commissioner. Prior to that, I was a member of the city’s Creeks Advisory Committee. I also am a Governor Brown appointee to the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, and (LAUGH) and also a board member and executive committee member of the Downtown Organization and Greater Santa Barbara Lodging and Restaurant Association. Like I’m sure everybody in here, I have ended up here because of a historical image that I have of Santa Barbara as a clean, welcoming, and safe place. And I look forward to talking more about that this afternoon, and how we can maintain that and move back in a direction that even makes it better. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Kramer. I’m running for city council because I have a young daughter, who’s about four years old. She was born here in Santa Barbara, lucky enough to be. And I was an Eagle Scout here in town, and also, at one time, I was an employee of the city of Santa Barbara as a beach lifeguard. And I taught swimming lessons to probably many of the children in this town for years at Ortega Pool and Oak Park. I’m running because I have a great sense of pride in this town. I have many generations of my family that live, have lived here in Santa Barbara, and I was seeing some things that I didn’t like. I saw that although we’ve had a homeless problem in Santa Barbara for many years, it’s gotten definitely grungier on State Street. The other day, I actually saw human excrement in front of a building, and that was pretty shocking to me. I don’t think that we need to have this in a town where our rents and our buildings are very expensive to live in, and yet we have some folks that have been and are committing crimes, that are creating a bit of a mini-crime wave here. We used to have no murders in Santa Barbara, and in the past few years, we’ve had several murders and several attempted murders. So clearly, there’s something going on in this town that we need some new direction on. Matthew Kramer for city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Landdecker.
Thank you. Thank you for putting on this forum. For so many years, I’ve worked with the League on so many political issues, and more recently, I’ve worked a lot with the Santa Barbara Village. I’m on the board of their parent organization, and my mom is a charter member, so it’s just exciting to be here. My campaign, as well as my values, I think, are based on the things that are the values of Santa Barbara. It’s what I would call a three-legged stool. The first leg is our natural environment. Everything kind of comes from that in this town. The beauty of the place is what brings our economic health, it’s what brings our physical health, it’s what keeps us all here. The second thing is the human environment, and that is all of you, all of us. It is the social caring that we have in this community for one another. It is also the buildings and trying to maintain the beauty of the community. And the last is the business environment. I have 15 years of running my own business, the last 12 years of running two major nonprofits in our community. I believe that I can bring to the council economic responsibility for the major economic issues going on here.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
First of all, thank you so much for coming out here this afternoon. It’s a beautiful day outside, so it’s a testament to how much you care about this race, that you’re willing to come inside and spend the time with us today. You know, Santa Barbara has not always been my home. I’ve been here for about 10 years, and prior to that, being a military brat and someone who immediately went into the Marine Corps on my 18th birthday, I’ve never lived anywhere longer than a year and a half. I’ve been here for about 10 years, and so Santa Barbara has always been my home. But it wasn’t until I returned from Afghanistan last year that I realized just how important Santa Barbara was to me, and just how much Santa Barbara has changed over the last decade. I believe that public safety is the number-one issue that we have here in Santa Barbara. And I believe the key to public safety is not just officers, it’s not just an informed public, but it’s leadership. It’s about having the right people that know how to deploy the resources that we do have, and in some cases, limited resources, in the right areas to be able to help the youth of our community, to help end gangs, and to help also with the aggressive panhandling and criminal vagrants that have taken over State Street. I look forward to answering your questions today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you. Go, Gary, go.[494.02][494.02](LAUGH). Well, thank you, and thank you all for coming out today, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting us today. I’m Bendy White, and I serve currently as one of your council members. And I am a Santa Barbara native with a lifetime of experience in helping to manage our region. I’ve served on both city and county planning commissions, the city water commission, which is tied with having the largest budget in the city, as well as the county’s fire protection planner. And that combination of local knowledge and managing our finances has translated into, during my four years on council, in us getting a handle on maintaining a balanced budget, keeping our priorities of public safety full complements of public safety. Going forward, I look forward to talking with you today about our beleaguered infrastructure and the need for us to come together for our kids and our grandkids in order to leave behind a system that is in as good a shape as we found it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whiskin.
Good afternoon. I’d like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and for all of you who are here today, and any of you who may be listening. We live in this incredible city, and since my husband and I moved here, I’ve really jumped in with both feet and volunteered my time and efforts to a number of organizations. I’m in my fourth year as Chair of the city’s Parks and Recreation Commission, and I am on the boards of Santa Barbara Beautiful and the Park Foundation. As well, I’m chairman of the Master Gardeners of Santa Barbara County. Through these organizations, I have promoted funding for programs for our youth, educating our public on sustainable landscape practices, and also beautifying our city. I have a career in finance in New York City, and also a career in landscape architecture and public project management, and think I bring a very unique and seasoned skillset to city council. And I look forward to earning your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Ali.
Hi. My name is Megan Diaz-Ali, and I’d like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. The work you do in voter registration and education nationwide is commendable, and I encourage, and the encouragement of women and men to get involved in politics is a meaningful one, so thank you. I am a renter. I live on the east side, and I’ve had the benefit of working in our nonprofit community for the Community Environmental Council, working to further efforts in energy conservation and renewable energy production, as well as Surgical Eye Expeditions International, which provides free vision care for underinsured individuals. I’m also a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. I look forward to serving on that commission, and I have enjoyed really reinstating some of the programs that were cut during the recession, as that department took the biggest cuts during the recession that we had. So moving into the future, that department, as well as our city, is looking ahead to a brighter future, and I’d like to be part of the decision-makers that make mindful choices to really preserve our community and move it in the future sustainably. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody here present. Thank you to the people watching, League of Women’s Voters and Education Fund. Muchas gracias. My name is Cruzito Herrera Cruz. I’m a young man that was born, raised, educated, and striving to be a public servant in the city of Santa Barbara. I’m a local. I’m a native. I’m a fluent Spanish speaker. I’m also learning Indigenous Nahuatl. So, cuali tonali, buenos dias. So, let’s see. One, I’m in it for this political campaign for adult and youth services, like I said in 2011 and in 2009 elections when I was running. I’m also in it to increase public infrastructure, to better and improve the public infrastructure in the city of Santa Barbara, east side, the west side districts, which I’ve always said has been marginalized, and that’s why I was running, to bring attention to those particular districts in our community. I also am running just to be a good public servant and to be a public steward. I thank you. The time has stopped.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
My name is Greg Hart. I grew up here in Santa Barbara and have lived here all my life. My father was actually the library director for the city of Santa Barbara. He helped reconstruct this downtown building. It’s a wonderful asset for the community. We’re very fortunate to live here. I’m very fortunate to have had the opportunity to serve two terms on the city planning commission, two terms on the city council, and be appointed by Governor Davis to a term on the California Coastal Commission. I have a great deal of experience. I care deeply about this community. I’m running because I have an 18-year-old son who’s off at college right now, and I’d like him to have the same opportunity to grow here, grow up here, raise a family in Santa Barbara. My wife and I ran and operated a small business for 20 years successfully, so I have business background. I have financial background in regards to having served as the city’s Finance Committee Chair for the entire time that I was on the city council. I look forward to hearing your questions, to have the dialogue with all the other candidates here. You have a tough choice this coming November to make your selections for city council. I’d very much like the opportunity to serve you again in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you very much. These, all my colleagues up here sound so qualified and so engaged, I would hate to see them leave their present positions and adopt the city council. No, they really are qualified in many different ways, but I’m existing now a city councilman, I think, as you know, not a professional politician by any means, a businessman, a Realtor, which has been great training to get to know the city of Santa Barbara in the years that I’ve been here since 1997. I would take issue with Mr. Nelson’s comments about the city changing, at least as he implied in a negative way, and I look forward to telling you about what we’ve done in the last four years, which I think are really some wonderful accomplishments, and I share that with the entire city council, and not just taking that on for myself. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. The candidates have been given three questions ahead of time, and we’ll start with Mr. Kramer on the first one. Do you favor any changes in government structure adopted by the council or to be placed before the voters, such as district elections, or a stronger mayor role, or anything else you think of?
Yes, I believe I’ve been advocating for annexation of several areas on the edges of our current city limits that need to be brought into the city limits. One of these is the Mission Canyon area. Let’s use that as an example. They’re currently receiving fire protection from the city. I was at the Fire and Police Commission, and the Pat, the chief of the fire department, shared with us that we are losing money via that joint cooperative fire protection. So areas like that, in which we would like to have put within the city limits. This would also solve one of our problems, which is density. I do not favor increasing the density downtown. I think that we should increase the density on the borders of our city. We already have several people that work in the area that’s called Nolita, or unincorporated Santa Barbara. It seems natural that at some point, those people have to choose whether they want to be a part of Santa Barbara or part of Greta. And I think that time has come. Our city has been smaller and grown in the past. The area on the Upper East Side, the house that I was living in with my daughter, was at one point within city limits in the early 20s, and at this point, now, it’s in the middle of the city. So that shows you that Santa Barbara has been a vibrant and growing city, and I advocate that we return that by using what’s already existing in the city charter for annexing new property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize. I said that the candidates had received these questions ahead of time. They’re not. I’m springing them on them.
Okay.[993.57][993.57](LAUGH). You made all of us wonder.
And if you want the question repeated, just ask. Mr. Landdecker.
Thank you. Let me first speak to some of the issues brought up by Mr. Kramer. You know, it might make sense to annex some of the areas you talked about. However, annexation requires the consent of the people you choose to annex. And the people of Mission Canyon, the people of Veronica Springs and that area, the people of Nolita have made it pretty clear that they don’t really want to be part of the city. And although it would be much simpler in a lot of ways for the city to have nice, neat borders, and that’s been a discussion item for many, many years, there isn’t a groundswell of support from it in those areas, and until there is, I’m not going to push very hard for it. On the issue of district elections, there is, it seems to me, a need both in fairness and perhaps even legally, to come up with a way that people can be represented that are less than the majority of the community. And the discussion for a long time has been about district elections, but if we have six districts in this town, if each of the members of council represented one district, they would be pretty tiny, and it would be very easy to get elected on one particular narrow issue. So what I suggested 25 years ago, and I continue to suggest, is that we go to four districts, two at-large members of council, and the mayor elected at large. That way, the three at-large people with any one district representative would be able to be a majority. It’s never gotten a whole lot of traction, but we’ve never had this issue pushed at the council level. It’s only been in votes up or down, and it’s gone down every time.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
First, I want to start off and go ahead and address Mr. Hotchkiss. When I talk about public safety and the issues that are facing the city right now, this is not an attack on our current city council. This is not saying that people are not attempting to do things right now to address the issues facing the city, including the restorative police program and other things. The issue is, is that I’ve been to almost 10,000 doors, and 90% of the people say exactly the same thing, that they feel like our city is unsafe, that it’s dirty, that they don’t go downtown, that their friends won’t come back here. And then you go online, and you look, and you see this is what people are also writing about our city, people who are tourists that we want to come back here. So maybe we are making some adjustments, but I believe we need to make further efforts to push towards making our cities safer and cleaner. So as for speaking towards what our city’s council can do, what I believe is it’s time that we have a little bit more direct input on what our police chief and our leadership over in the police department is actually doing and how they’re deploying their resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Do you favor any changes in government structure adopted by the council or to be placed before the voter? And it can be anything.
Change in government structure. Well, I’m satisfied with the at-large nature of representation that the council has. Now, we’re watching throughout the state, challenge to at-large elections, and modified versions of at-large are in the works. I’ve heard of people, for example, you could vote, take all of your votes and put them to one candidate as one way perhaps to give individuals a little more power in how they select candidates. So I’m open to a citizen dialogue, a community dialogue about that issue, to see whether we do need to change. I prefer the at-large representation, because I think we then, as council members, look, our interest is for the citizens at large rather than just a particular piece of geographic turf.
Thank you. Ms. Whiskin.
With respect to district elections, I do not favor district elections. I favor the at-large system that we have in our city. If we have problems, it’s because I believe our leaders are not connecting with everyone in the community, and this is essential, and we need to work harder at doing that. In terms of other changes to government structure, I favor changes that will help small businesses perhaps get through red tape in our city faster. We have, we have some red tape areas, definitely, in our city. And I also favor areas that might help our Realtors with their zoning information reports. That’s another area that kind of gets stuck in the mud sometimes and slows down the process of getting a real estate transaction done. I also think, and this is, this is not a structure issue, but I think it’s important to bring up at this time, we have plans in the city. We have a climate action plan that was just implemented as part of the general plan. We also have a pedestrian master plan. We have lots of plans in the city that I think really should be, and I’m not talking about the climate action plan, but they should be dusted off and looked at, and we should start using them when we’re developing our city policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ali.
Well, with regards to district election, if we’re talking about city structure that I would like to change, I’d like to keep it the same at-large system that we currently have. I think districts’ elections sort of come into play when a city grows to a certain size, and at 90,000 residents, give or take. We’re sort of under that sort of threshold and really needing to talk about district elections. As I mentioned earlier, I am an east sider, and I am proud to represent that area as it pertains to the rest of the city. I think that district elections could ultimately create a rivalry between the various candidates and council members, and I think as I approach my candidacy and serving on the council, I am very much looking and listening to residents throughout the city and hearing concerns and wanting to make advancements to achieve the betterment of our city. I also want to further some of the traffic element improvements that I hear all residents talking about in our community. As Leslie mentioned, we do have a pedestrian master plan, we have an east side transportation master plan, and we have a bike plan that we’re developing. And we had a bike plan 20 years ago that got shelved. So when we’re talking about district elections and listening to our at-large constituents, that’s what I want to change in our government structure, is really getting onto the front lines and listening to our community, not bringing my own agenda, but really thinking about what the community wants and aiding them in their goals and desires.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
Can you please repeat the question?
Do you favor any changes in government structure, either by the council or by the voter?
Since it’s a true-pronged question, we have to look at it and consider it from the leadership as a city council dais and candidate. I would take leadership in a particular issue of district-based elections under 14,026-3B. I would take leadership. Santa Barbara needs this. Santa Barbara does not need to be a racially polarized voting community. I’ve lived on the east side longer than my predecessor here, Megan. I want to represent the east side. I want to represent the west side. I’ve been talking about this in 2011, 2009. I’ve read it longer than she’s been alive. So anyways, let’s talk about district-based elections, and as a city council, take leadership, yes. But I will always support a city referendum or initiative proposals that are generated through the voters. So there’s two things there that we always need to support. Leadership from the council is one thing, and leadership from the voters that talk about reforming the government, yes. There’s a third prong. Everyone’s talking about zoning, land use. Legislative summit to do the ordinance updates is part of reforming the government in a little bit. So yes, I’d be very strongly, adamantly, wholeheartedly invested 60 hours, at least, in a week to work for that change.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
I don’t support district elections. I think this issue comes up every city council election, and people talk about it, and the voters, I think, have spoken about it very clearly. There’s an advantage to having people be able to vote for all members of the city council if there’s an issue that you have a concern with. You have access to all seven members of the council, including the mayor, that wouldn’t necessarily be the case in a district situation. I personally have lived on the west side, the east side, the north side, San Roque. I think I have a really strong sense of what the neighborhoods are interested, but I think we all share the common belief and support for the community as a whole, and I think it’s very important for the council to share that value as well. If I’m elected to the city council, I do pledge to hold sidewalk table office hours throughout the city so that I can be accessible and available to people, to have them bring those neighborhood concerns without having to go down to city hall and talk in front of the council. That can sometimes be intimidating, so I think it’s important for council members to get out in the community and really hear directly from people about what the issues are that concern them.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Well, I’m in agreement with most of my colleagues here about the efficacy of the existing program of elections that we have. We’re responsible for the whole city. I would hate to see a sort of balkanization where we had one part of the city versus another part of the city. It could be like Chicago, where everything gets pulled in the wrong direction and nothing gets done, or Washington, DC. The second thing about structural changes, at one point, the police department wanted the chief of police to be hired by the city council, and I told them quickly that that was a bad idea, that would become a political football, and they didn’t like that, frankly. But I think it’s by far the best way to go. Right now, as you probably know, the council is responsible only for hiring the city administrator and the city attorney, and then they take care of businesses that were at the levels below that. So that system, I think, works well. It’s certainly not perfect, but it has brought some real good changes in recent times, and including a reduction in the number of employees by almost 9%. So we have contracted government, saved a lot of money, $8 million a year with the existing system. I’d like to keep going that way.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
Well, you’ve heard some hints from other candidates, but what your question really sparks in my mind is the need to promote and improve our access as a community to city government. Examples that come to mind for me are a return to scheduled evening meetings for city council, better neighborhood control and input over the development of their own neighborhoods, and more credible and transparent processes with our boards and commissions. This city is going to face enormous social, economical, and development challenges over the next few decades, and I think the number-one impact a new city council member can, can have with the council as a whole is to increase that transparency and involvement from our community residents.
Thank you. Next question, and we’ll start with Mr. Landdecker. What is the city’s role in meeting local needs for housing, transportation, and health? Nice big question.
Okay, I’ll start with housing. The city, it seems to me, has a role to play. We are not the primary provider of housing, and in a day where redevelopment money has been taken away by the state, we’re in a difficult position to provide housing at all. But because we have a planning role, and the role in creating the general plan, and coming up with the measures that put its ideas into place, we can put in incentives for kinds of housing, and I am a proponent of our, of our encouraging more rental housing, particularly small, affordable rental units. That is with a small “A.” In other words, market-rate housing that are affordable by design rather than subsidized affordable units. Transportation is mostly done by MTD, the Metropolitan Transit District, but the city works with them. The city can encourage them to do certain things. I’m a believer that we have to get beyond the idea of buses running along bus paths, and we have to be able to figure out more ways of getting people to bus routes, to other creative ways of moving them around the community, that simply doing what we have done in the past isn’t going to bring us any more than about 5% of the people who past isn't going to bring us any more than about 5% of the people who ride buses. We have to come up with better systems that do what cars do, which is get you from your house to your destination and back to your house again. I'm out of time, so I can't get to the third one.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Now I see why we were supposed to get these questions in advance, so. As far as housing is concerned, I've made it very clear how I feel about density right now in the city. I believe that with the limited resources we have as far as economic diversity, as far as our natural resources, and as far as what we can further sustain with our current infrastructure, I think we're as dense as we can be. I think that we shouldn't be growing anymore until we can address those three issues. When it comes to transportation, I believe it's an infrastructure issue. We need to make sure that our roads and other things are up to par so that they can actually sustain the amount of traffic that we currently have. But I'll tie that in with healthcare. I believe it's really about education. We've all found that, and I've learned this firsthand, when you have the opportunity to provide people with education, and I'll use the example of coordinating bikers and cars. If you get them both understanding the rules of the road and how they can sort of work together to be safe, then I think that you accomplish a lot more than if you were to turn around and try and legislate or spend a lot of money creating alternatives when in reality, we really could just be putting out public service announcements and providing information to people that will allow them to be safer. And when it comes to healthcare, providing them with information that will allow them to avoid, provide people preventative healthcare so that it's not always about going to the hospital or providing them with a hospital, more of keeping them healthy so that they don't need to actually do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you. Well, the city has had an amazing policy, an excellent policy, over the last several decades in creating affordable housing through the redevelopment agency. That's now gone. So now we must depend on our zoning and general plan for encouraging specific kinds of housing. I've been very active in the formation of Plan Santa Barbara, which proposes to reduce the bulk of buildings but to increase the number of units, of smaller units, that are allowed within a building. So that's a way to at least have people, and that housing would be along our, primarily along our transportation corridors. So that actually will reduce the amount of demand for using a car if folks are living downtown. Clearly, in transportation, the city needs to balance the modes of transportation, walking, biking, bus, and cars. And so the job, it's a delicate job of investing in these various forms of transportation so that people have more options to get around town than just, for example, using cars. As to health, again, this comes back to this, to Plan Santa Barbara, which encourages people to live and work downtown, and of course, get on a bike or use sidewalks and get around town by their own means rather than just jumping in their car.
Thank you. Ms. Whiskom.
With, excuse me, with respect to housing, as Mr. White mentioned, we have the average unit size density incentives in place now to encourage developers to build smaller units, and they will be rental units. And I think that that, it's a test program, and I think it's worthy of being a test program, and that will go a long way to see where that takes us and if there are transportation issues associated with that. Also, our housing authority, I think, has done a great job in the housing area. For transportation, I believe that our city needs to work with other agencies and authorities. Some of it is out of our control totally, but we need to make sure that we take advantage of opportunities to provide safe routes to schools, bicycle paths, and walking opportunities in our city. I was a big advocate on the Mesa for local control of State Route 225, and we got a bike lane put in, and we got the lanes cut down to one lane of traffic, and it's been, I think, a huge success there. In terms of health, that area takes a big role. The health of our community is, are parks, are they clean and safe? And I think that that's something that, at the city level, we can work on because basically those kind of environments are healthy environments and really encourage healthy communities. We have a lot of programs in our city that also, oh, I'm out of time. It's hard for me to look over there and see that big red stop sign. Sorry.
Ms. Ali.
When it comes to housing and growth, the general plan incorporated an element for growth, 2,000 dwellings, units in over 30 years. And with implementation of the average unit size density program, we are taking accountability for the undeniable growth that not only our world experiences but our city, and we need to take responsibility for that and make it easier for our workers to live in the community that they are, that they serve. We want to make sure that that adds to their quality of life, and we really take in those sales tax dollars that they're probably spending in areas where they live. When it comes to transportation, the transportation and circulation element of our general plan really takes into account planning for infrastructure that is conducive to all modes of transportation, cars, bicycles, pedestrian routes, and public transportation, including skateboarding. So that really ties into the housing element and making sure that we're building density where it makes sense, in the population centers, on the transportation corridors, to really preserve those historical areas in our community, our R1 areas and less dense areas. And when it comes to healthcare, as I mentioned earlier, I worked for Surgical Eye Expeditions International. I serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, which really serves as the social services and healthcare services element of our city. I also serve on the Neighborhood Advisory Council, which oversees the Community Development Block grant funding. And those grants are given to various nonprofits, some in town, that do provide healthcare opportunities for individuals. So I look forward to continuing to support their good work through my work on the council.
Mr. Cruz.
Thank you for the question. I think if we look at where she left off at this moment, that the neighborhood and outreach services in Program 6195 in the city, the budget page 357, if you want to look at it, is very important. That deals with the social service component of how the vibrant health of our community is doing. Homelessness, youth violence, the lack of affordable housing are all part of not being a healthy community physically and spiritually. So we have to change that, and we need to increase more the allotment in that budgetary in the Parks, Recs Department component within the city. When we look at the transportation, we have to look at alternative ways to reduce our carbon footprint, where we should challenge ourselves to say, let's subsidize the MTD for free. See how many people do use it on a regular basis, on a frequent basis, and less usage in the downtown transportation corridor. It's a right for the general plan of Santa Barbara to build density on the East Side and West Side, but not in the outer communities? It's kind of hypocritical. So we have to look at it politically, that density is not good for the East Side and West Side because there's already health and safety code issues that are being violated. We look at the housing development, we have to look at the state standards and the state certifications. Now that the RDA is in dissolution, we have to look at ways to invigorate the housing stock within our community. That would be Program Number 2123 and 2126. That says low and moderate households to facilitate the development of affordable housing. Affordable housing is needed in Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Well, the city has a really excellent record of providing affordable housing. Approximately 11% of all the housing units in the city of Santa Barbara have either been built by the housing authority or the product of increased density that the city council and the planning commission have approved. And that's probably the best record for providing affordable housing of any coastal city in the state of California. But obviously, the demand is really immense. There are about 20,000 people a day now who are traveling from Ventura County, where they live, to jobs in South Santa Barbara County. Those commuters are clogging up the freeway and all of our streets. That's the traffic congestion we experience. City's population hasn't even actually increased in the last 10 years, but we have those additional commuters coming into town every day, which is contributing to congestion. So I do think we need to provide more affordable housing, where the city needs to continue with the process that it's moving forward with, with the general plan, and I think even be more aggressive in providing opportunities in the downtown core for affordable housing. Rental housing, obviously, is the most important thing. And in terms of transportation, in addition to widening the 101 freeway with a carpool lane, which encourages people to use the really good bus system that operates between Ventura County and South Santa Barbara County, we need to work on having commuter rail coming into Santa Barbara County from Ventura County, and also promote additional services through MTD. When I was on the council previously, I was part of an effort to increase funding for MTD significantly to improve the headways on the buses on State and Hollister and going from the East Side to the West Side. Unfortunately, with the recession, those improvements have been put on pause, but now that the economies are improving, I think we can revisit those.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you. Let's be clear about one thing. Affordable housing has had zero impact on a transportation problem, on the commuting problem, and it will not have any impact. And that's just not an opinion from me. The reason is clear. When you can have a three- or four-bedroom house in Ventura with a two-car garage and a yard front and back, you're not going to trade that for a box in the middle of Santa Barbara, nor is your family. The same goes for Lompoc, Santa Maria, and Orca. We will never overcome that problem, and it's foolish if we try. It's just a fact of life. So I want to, so that you understand, we don't have money for affordable housing now, and it's not a tragedy, it's not a travesty. We are going to try to see what we can provide rental-wise, particularly with the new companies that come here and underwrite their own housing in that sense. What's the other thing I want to talk about? We're talking about health here. I've had an interesting opportunity in the last two months to try out our health services, and I want to tell you, they are great. I can't say enough about Cottage Hospital or Cottage Rehabilitation Hospital, the care that people give, the really excellent professionalism they have. And I don't say that just from a selfish or self-centered point of view, but because it really is a star in our crown, if I can put it that way. It's something that people, I hope you appreciate if you ever have the problem that I do, you will, but that others also appreciate when they consider moving and looking at Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
It's a lot more fun with a question like that to go first, right? So by now, I think I've heard a lot of things I agree with, a lot of things I may not agree with, and certainly I'd be sitting at home watching this on TV and throwing socks at the television and saying, what did you just say and how did you answer that question? To me, that really boils down to with our collective frustration over what we can control as policy versus what we can just influence. And both of those eventually come down to the community's level of trust with the city and how the city will represent us. We're going to, some people have alluded to the general plan, some people have alluded to the Highway 101, other people have alluded to healthcare that needs to improve. All of those are going to be tremendous issues coming forward to play both regionally and locally with our city. And I think it's really important that you look at all three of those and work towards gauging and improving the community trust in the process that the city can both influence and develop policy to support those.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer.
Jason, if you don't mind, I'm going to roast Frank here for a second. Frank, you get a paycheck from the city of Santa Barbara as a professional politician, and so I just wanted to make that point. Secondly, your job is to do what we can't. Your job is to solve the unsolvable problems. At least give it a try. I mean, that's what you're on city council for. And I go back to what I'm saying about housing and health. It's time that we look at growing our borders a bit. And if you look at Measure F, which is on the ballot along with our names, that is adding property to the city. So clearly, the current city council is in favor of that. They're the ones that put that ballot measure on there. So I think the voters are ready for it. I've talked to some people in those areas. Look at the style of their houses. It's Santa Barbara style. Now, to health, I was formerly an emergency medical technician for the city of Santa Barbara. On a regular basis, I saved lives, did medical procedures on people, and I think that gives me a very unique look at our medical system here. I do not think it's that good. We only have one hospital in town. Those of you that are lucky enough to remember when we had two hospitals, that was a much better choice. What if you didn't like your doctor at Cottage Hospital? Where else do you go? You don't have a choice. Before, when we had two hospitals, in the event of a natural disaster, if one of the hospitals is knocked out, you have an additional facility. So I advocate that we look at bringing in more healthcare services, a greater choice like we used to have. And I thank you for the question, and thank you for your vote.
Thank you. And now we'll go on to the last question, and we'll start with Mr. Nelson. What, if anything, should the city do to replace redevelopment funds?
It's funny, when people talk about RDA funds, they were talking about them like it wasn't already our money in the first place. They're tax dollars. They were just coming through the state. So what should we do to replace them? I think what we need to do first is look at how we spent them. We treated them like they were that check that came from your grandparents on your birthday. It was that bonus money you just counted on them, so therefore, we could sort of blow it on whatever we wanted. I think that what this has forced us to do as a city is become more responsible when we look at not only how we spend our money, but understanding the sustainability of those things and the long-term cost of actually maintaining things that we do put money into. So unfortunately, we lost some things. Fortunately, we did lose some things. I always point to the example, one of the first things I noticed when we came home, when I came home from Afghanistan, were these brick crosswalks that they put in. And remember how long and how we cut down on the streets, and now they're half-brick and half-asphalt, and they just look awful. And, you know, those were RDA funds that paid for that. And in the end, they were unsustainable, and we actually should have done something with money so that we could sustain them. So what I think it is, we're going to have to obviously find other ways to support other programs, but what I do think a benefit of this is, is that we'll be looking long-term, and when we utilize any of our funds, it will actually have to take the long view, which is always, in my opinion, when it's government-involved, the best view you should take.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you. The redevelopment agency was formed a few years before Proposition 13 became law, and I expect that many of us in this room have been great beneficiaries of Proposition 13. But there have been consequences, and the consequence has been a steady starvation of our physical infrastructure. And so now, these 40, roughly 40 years, 35 years after Prop 13 has taken effect, we've gotten all the benefits of having our property taxes limited, but we also have the cost of a infrastructure, roads, buildings, and parks, which are not, have not received for many years, the investment, the annual investment that we know about in our homes and so forth that just is needed to keep things in good shape. We've got to come up with a plan, a funding plan that's, I mean, that's fairer. I can tell you, my neighbor pays four times the property tax that I do. It's not fair. So a different funding system that everybody can get behind, that is both conservatives and liberals can say, this is fair, and that we can leave for our kids and grandkids a building, streets, and other city activities in as good a shape as we had them when we were young.
Ms. Whiskom.
Well, we're going to have a difficult time replacing the RDA funds, but the good news is that the state is now looking at nine-plus million dollars for us to possibly get back out of the RDA bond money to redo the Cabrillo Bath House and Art Pavilion, which will be a great, great feature. I think we need to look at, as Bendy said, our deferred maintenance on our infrastructure, and that includes our buildings. And there's a great success story from the Carrillo Rec Center. After it was renovated with RDA funds, the revenues increased by about 160%. So when we're looking at funding things in the future, we need to also look to areas where we can grow our revenue and then put it towards some of our deferred maintenance projects. I also believe that we need to look for more public-private partnerships. They're not going to be available on our roads. They're not sexy enough, but they can be available in some of our buildings, such as the Cabrillo Bath House. And we can look to form public-private partnerships, to complete the funds, to redo that and bring it in as a positive revenue source for us. Excuse me. So I think it's stretching our dollars as far as possible. We're going to need to look inside the city, in the city's particular programs. For instance, in the transportation area, there's a study being done right now on, to see if we can economize and make better use of our funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ali.
Well, the RDA funding was due to end in 2015, so in some ways, we were sort of at the end of our funding anyway and needed to look ahead as to how we were going to transition out of the RDA funding. When it comes to thinking about the areas that the RDA funding did serve, I want to work with our business owners, our downtown property owners, and concerned residents to think creatively about how we can protect the infrastructure that we've already built and look creatively for opportunities to continue improvements. Additionally, the- Additionally, the RDA funding really helped to fund our city's affordable housing program, and there's been state legislation to sort of fill in those gaps. Nothing's been passed yet. But I really look forward to continuing the collaboration between our nonprofit agencies, like People Self-Help Housing and such, to really make that commitment to try to fund and approve projects that are not going to otherwise be funded by the RDA funding. Also, our city is doing a good job of putting aside money to make capital improvements as we are coming out of the recession, and I support that decision-making. And it allows us to sort of draw when there's a rainy day from some surplus, and it also allows us to really plan in an authentic way moving forward to make those necessary improvements and address our backlog of unfunded capital improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
Can you please repeat the question?
What, if anything, should the city do to replace redevelopment funds?
Thank you for the question. That's the most important questions. Without financing, without funds, without the taxpayers' funds, we can't have a government. So when we look at, how do we generate more revenue from the RDA dissolution? First and foremost, I have 11 points that I wrote real quick. TOT tax, bed tax, let's increase the percentage. Property tax, sales tax. Sales tax, we're paying a lot as consumers. Property tax, property owners are paying sufficient amount of property tax, $26 million. So when we look at the TOT tax at the teens, in the millions, we have to increase the percentage. They're lucrative. If we're a tourist-based economy, that tourist profit should be reinvested in the public infrastructure and in the city's vibrant wealth, also. Two, we basically do a sales of liquor tax. Three, decrease the unfunded pension liabilities in our Calpers. Four, reduce the redundancy of work in administrative of the City of Santa Barbara employees. Five, measure for a tax increase, a referendum. Six, we do a measure bond. Seven, we would look at the 100K Club in the City of Santa Barbara. There's a lot of individuals receiving over $100,000 in employee compensation, which takes away from the general services of the City of Santa Barbara. Like Ms. Wiscombe said, there's $14.1 million of the dissolution of RDA monies coming about, 14.1 million of unencumbered funds for fiscal year 2014. So we have to look at how we can invest that in adult youth services and public infrastructure. Federal state grants also, we could seek. Lot of money everywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Well, the redevelopment funding was extremely important to the development of downtown Santa Barbara. If you can actually recall back prior to the Redevelopment Agency, downtown had four lanes on State Street, very narrow sidewalks. We didn't have the parking structures that we have today. Essentially, the downtown and the waterfront didn't exist as we know it today, and those investments have led to the economic engine that really funds all of city government and all the services that we all enjoy. So it's extremely important that those investments were made. It's going to be difficult to replace that funding, but we have to try, and particularly in the areas of maintenance for downtown. Maintaining that capital investment that's made over that time is going to be expensive. And as Meagan mentioned too, we don't have the funding that comes through the Redevelopment Agency for affordable housing. I think that there's potential at the state level for the state legislature to readdress that issue. I think there's a great consensus in Sacramento that that funding for affordable housing was very important for local governments, and hopefully, as the state's budget picture improves, there may be an opportunity to have some of that funding restored. But fundamentally, the problem local government faces, and it's not just in Santa Barbara, it's really every community in the state, is the disconnect between the money that was taken by Sacramento to balance the state's budget from local governments. And we've suffered from that. We've lost redevelopment funding. We've lost road funding. There's a whole series of funding sources that, over the past 30 years, have been taken away from local government for the state government, and we need to figure out a way to replace that funding. And obviously, there needs to be a wide-ranging community dialogue about that. It's not something, I think, the city council appropriately is going to decide by itself. It may take a voter initiative. But I think we can have that community dialogue together and come up with a plan that makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
All right. Thank you very much. Unlike Greg, I'm not ready to put on the ballot a question of whether you want to increase your taxes. I don't want to open that door. Insofar as TOT, that's best answered by our tourist industry and not by us. They have their finger on that pulse, and if they think that would work, that's great. If not, if it would be detrimental to business and tourism here, then I wouldn't want to do it either. Increasing government efficiency is a little bit like dieting. The less you take in, the better you get, as it were. The less that the government takes in, in this case, the city government, the more it's forced to reexamine what it's doing now, to flatten itself, as it were, and to become efficient. So I would still take that approach with our city government. We improved our economic situation by doing exactly that, reducing our employees by 81, which, as I said before, represented an $8 million savings. Could we continue in that direction? Probably certainly not to that degree. Are there other areas where we could improve? I think so. But we will never find out unless we look, and we won't look if we just go to turn into the public and say, "Give us more money."
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
Well, all three of your questions today speak more to me about the city's role with the community rather than specific things to do in response to those questions, and this again is one of them to me. As Frank said, he wouldn't be willing to put a tax increase on the ballot, because I think we all know what the answer would be. And it speaks more to the, right now, to the community's willingness to invest in the city and what they see the city's role in taxing us, whether the dollars are being used appropriately now, whether other liabilities the city has are being treated responsibly and honestly. And if we were to ask the voters to contribute to the enormous backlog we have, the $245 million in backlog capital costs and infrastructure, would be, we'd be willing to trust the city to do that correctly. I think, again, that's a role for future council members to play, and one of the most important roles. We're not going to get there by a TOT tax. A one-point increase in TOT tax is a drop in the bucket. An appropriate request for an increase in sales tax is a drop in the bucket. Business groups are already taxing themselves. The local hotel industry is taxing itself for greater outreach. The local business districts are looking at increasing them. Milpus Corridor is looking at having their own business improvement district to take care of their needs. But the city as a whole is eventually going to have to come to each one of us and ask us to contribute, and I think that's going to be the greatest challenge for this council going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer.
Well, as a business owner, I've already been helping you with some of your social problems in Santa Barbara. I employed a homeless woman who was also handicapped and my mine in the mountains, and I took her up to work there, and she worked out great. In fact, her quote was, "Was the best time she'd had in a long time to be employed and to do some hard work and come back with something in her pocket to make ends meet." I've also worked at the state government level. I worked for the Speaker of House, the representatives for the state of Oregon. I've also helped the federal government. Oh, I also testified before the State Energy Commission as an alternative energy expert, possibly about taking out my gas line here in town and replacing those with a windmill and solar power. And at the federal level, I helped a chemical standard for algae jet fuel to be blended in with regular jet fuel for the international airlines with the Federal Aviation Administration and the U.S. Air Force. So I've had some experience getting money and working with organizations outside the city. And I think that's the first place that I would start before I would start with a residence. I think that's where most of the funding is going to come from, and I think that raising the taxes is not a good idea, but adding to the taxes is an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a break now, and...
Do I get to respond or not?
Oh, did I miss somebody?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Checked you off too soon. Go right ahead, Mr. Landdecker.
I hope everyone else chooses to tick me off on their ballots as well. The question is about redevelopment dollars, and let's recall that the redevelopment money disappeared from the city in a long overdue effort by the city, by the state to balance its budget. The state took every bit of money it could find on the table and said, "We need that to balance the state budget." Well, that leaves the city in an impossible situation where a lot of the money that we count on to rebuild streets, to pay pensions, and to do new initiatives, like came from the Redevelopment Agency, isn't there. I'll pledge to get involved in a statewide discussion, because this involves every city in the state with the California League of Cities on how are we going to create new sources of revenue for cities? You know, we can all come up with ideas of what should happen, like changing Proposition 13, but that has to happen at a state level to have any meaning. I want to take the rest of the time I've got on this question to respond to something Mr. Hotchkiss said in an earlier question. Frank, you can't assume that everyone in the City of Santa Barbara is like you. You say that people won't leave Lompoc to live in a small apartment in Santa Barbara, but the fact is, many, many want to do that. More importantly, from my experience as Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics, most people don't have the insurance policy that you have from working for the city, and they don't get to go to Cottage Hospital and be at the Recovery Hilton. They have to find other ways of doing that, and we have to take care of those people as a city council, not ignore them and think that they are just like us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can take a break, and I'll call you back. I think the number of candidates means we use up a lot of time, and I think we'll have time for two questions, perhaps three from the audience, because we've also told the candidates they get a two-minute period for closing statement. And we are starting this time with Mr. White, and the first question comes from Santa Barbara Village. We all know the number of baby boomers is steadily increasing, the senior population in our city. How do you see this affecting our city and the seniors living here? And what role do you see city council playing in addressing related challenges?
Well, clearly, we boomers are starting to head into a next phase, and we do need to plan for that. The region has, is starting to see more interest in senior care communities of various kinds. We, in fact, have, coming before council next Tuesday, a zoning proposal on South Hope. So the marketplace is also addressing this, our wave that's coming. From my perspective, things we can do locally or individually is in-home care or having granny flats. Now, where can we do this? We can do this in neighborhoods which tolerate it. This is an issue that's neighborhood by neighborhood. Who is willing to allow this? And we need to have it, of course, substantially controlled. But that is an area where the city can help out.
Thank you. Ms. Wiscombe.
Excuse me. May I ask a question? How long do we have for these questions?
You have one minute.
One minute. Okay. Thank you very much. I hope you didn't start me.
No, it's fine.
Okay. Well, I'm one of those baby boomers, so I think we need to make sure that when we consider transportation, that we consider our seniors. We need to have good sidewalks for use. We need to have good routes. We need to work with our agencies, particularly our transportation agency, to make sure that our seniors have effective public transportation if they're no longer driving cars. I have 30 seconds. Whoa. Okay. And I also think, you know, we need to consider the fact that some of our seniors are active, and we need to continue to foster programs in, which we do through our Parks and Recreation Department, programs for seniors to keep them active and keep them engaged. If I have time, I'm going to go back to transportation for a minute. Do I have... At any rate, one idea that was suggested to me that I think we need to pursue is perhaps some shuttle buses on routes, smaller buses, that might get some of our seniors out and about. Thank you.
Ms. Sally.
Well, I served as the producer and host for a show called Nonprofit Spotlight, and through that venue, I was able to get to know a lot of the nonprofits in our community, and I got to interview Salma Rubin and Hat Freud. But listening to Salma and hearing her desires and needs for the aging community really led me to recognize that downsized housing and transportation are the main issues that we need to provide, making sure that we do have safe pedestrian routes in our city. And it's important to know that ball bouts are not just traffic-reducing for speed, but they're also to provide pedestrian safety so that people feel safe seeing out in front of traffic. So really, making sure that we also have access ramps and provide sidewalk links is important. And again, the downsized housing and that sort of sense of community, and that's what Santa Barbara Village provides, is people still want to live their independent lives, but really get back to that sense of community and sharing. And so I'd like to see opportunities to support organizations like SB Village that are paying attention to the needs of our aging community, but also making sure that we're mixing the generations. I know that I've heard many people that, you know, bring their grandparents into the family to help take care of the young grandkids, and I fully embrace that sort of thinking and living style.
Mr. Cruz.
I would focus my leadership as a council member at CDBG Administration and Human Services Program 2121 and 2124 that would facilitate increased human services for the adult services and youth services. When we look at the adult component, we have to look at the people that are retiring, the aging out of the public sector, the employment sector. We have to look at AARP as an organization, stakeholders. We have to look at the home-in-care assistance, living specialists within our community to basically create relationships for better services in our community. We also have to look at a problem in our community, probate law and probate, and the disadvantage of seniors not having the proper legal representation within the Superior Court of the County of Santa Barbara that's being taken advantage and their lively equity is taken away. So we have to look at different components to be able to empower the senior citizens, because we're all going there every second of our life.
And Mr. Hart.
Well, I think the two big issues facing, you know, our aging population are affordable housing and transportation. It's the things that are challenging for everybody in this community. There's lots of people who live in the single-family homes that they've lived in their whole lives, and it isn't comfortable anymore to have to maintain and take care of that large home. My mom lives in the house that I grew up in, four-bedroom house over on the west side. She'd prefer, I think, to live in a smaller unit, but there aren't many of those units available, particularly single-story units. There's, you know, we built a lot of multi-story downtown dwelling units, but there aren't really single-family or single-level housing units downtown. And in addition to that, we have Easy Lift Transportation, which provides transportation for frail seniors who can't use the MTD bus service. But the funding that they have is not adequate to meet the growing burgeoning demand on those services that's going to be happening over the next 20 years. So we have to figure out a way to make sure that Easy Lift has the funding available to meet that demand.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Well, independence for any age is absolutely vital, and preserving that for seniors would be a prime, or should be a prime goal, actually has been, thanks to the ADA. I think, as I indicated before, I've gotten a newfound appreciation of street curbs, cuts, and ramps, and handicap parking. I had no idea how important it was to be able to get near the entrance door, particularly when you're stumbling along on crutches. So all that stuff is in place already. We do a pretty good job of it. There's no building, really, including City Hall, that is inaccessible. And I'm just, I have a newfound appreciation, so, and that's going to be more and more important as our population ages.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
I've heard a lot of good ideas, and I tend to look at this more from a 10,000-foot level. And two things that I would suggest is, one, supporting a healthy and active business climate that contributes to our quality of life. And that would also give the city the resources and the finances to affect positive change in this area you're talking about. Another way that I'd suggest is a traditional historical way of Santa Barbara dealing with things, and that's another board or commission. But before that makes you groan, I think as we are growing older and getting to look like the gentleman here on my right, we will need structured representation and subject matter experts in those areas who have a place at the table for what Bendy refers to as neighborhood-by-neighborhood engagement for transportation issues. And we need that type of representation in the process. We have a whole bunch of other groups and functions that are available to the city right now through its boards and commissions, but this is one particular area that's missing. And if we just blink a little bit, we're soon going to be there and see that issue more clearly.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer.
I think the first thing I would do is direct them to the list of open vacancies on the boards and commissions of Santa Barbara. I don't understand it. If I was retired and I had time on my hands, I would donate some time to the city, and I would serve in a capacity of leadership on these boards and make life better for everyone. And I think it's a failure of the current city council that we have, like on the Fire and Police Commission, two open seats, one of which was the former vice commissioner, that have been empty for several months. And if I was elected, within 30 days, I would fill every open seat with a person that wants to serve their community. I also believe that the sidewalks are unacceptable. If you've seen people get around in wheelchairs or crutches or walkers or whatever it is, they're atrocious. Some of them are way out of, you know, tolerance, and they should be easy enough that you can get around if for... get around if, for God forbid, you have some sort of medical problem. But I think involving yourself socially and politically in the town is a great way to prevent dementia and other things from happening once we start getting older. And I would urge those of that generation to help us. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Landecker.
Well, with reference to what Mr. Jordan just said, I am one of those people who has subject matter expertise on aging. And I'm glad to see that a lot of my peers are here in the room. The fact is, we are kind of becoming a majority, especially in this city. Santa Barbara Village is one of the organizations that faces that. What they try to do is help people stay in their homes. And for a lot of people, just that, being able to know that you're going to have care in your home as you age, is extremely important. For other people, as Greg suggested, it might make more sense to be able to leave their homes. And I would like to show some leadership in finding ways that people can move out of their four-bedroom homes into smaller places without having incredible tax implications of doing that and losing the advantages of Proposition 13. The fact is, what we really just need is recognition and understanding that this is a big issue in our community, as in all communities, and look at it as we make decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
So, the first thing I was told when I moved to Santa Barbara was that this is the community of the newlywed and early dead. So, obviously, this is not a new issue for Santa Barbara. Advantage of going last, I can comment, all of my colleagues here have said very, I think, appropriate things. I agree with Ms. Wiscombe and other people that have said it, hey, we need sidewalks that people can actually traverse. I remember when my grandmother broke her hip, similar to Frank, I guess, it's got to be how hard it was and how much she recognized all of a sudden the difference. And this is before a lot of ADA requirements were put in. So, I recognize that this is something that we have to acknowledge in our aging population. I would disagree with Ms. Wiscombe. I don't think that most of our seniors are active. All the ones I've met are active, so I would think you all are. And I think that leads us into two things. One, we need to make sure that transportation and public safety becomes a priority so that they can feel safe and get around. And the last thing is, I think there's a real opportunity in Santa Barbara to build on the closing middle skills gap. We have a lot of people in Santa Barbara who don't have opportunity, and we have a lack of middle skills, so I think we could lead that into.
Out of time. Okay. Another, a second question, and we will start with Ms. Wiscombe. What should the city do to ensure an adequate and safe water supply for the future?
Well, I think that we already do some of the things. We have a great water conservation program. We have incentives in place for landscapes, water-wise landscapes, which are important. I think that we need to continue to educate the public and our residents on the seriousness of our water issues. I think we all need to do a huge rain dance and pray for rain. We also have, we have some work to do with the State Water Board that I think that we're working on now, and we're trying to, we're making effective policies for the future with them to ensure our water supply is protected. Our desal plant is going to be an incredibly expensive venture, $22 million, and I think that that's something that we need to have on the back burner, but probably not appropriate for now, given our financial situation.
Thank you. Ms. Sally.
Well, we've been in a drought for over more than two years, and we live in a very arid climate. As much as it is Mediterranean, we need to be mindful about our use of water and make further efforts to conserve. And a lot of my work at the Community Environmental Council was about conserving our resources, water being one of them. And our city has a great rebate program that encourages homeowners to use drought-tolerant plants in their front yard. In fact, my friends are excavating their yard as we speak. But really driving home those habitual changes in times of plenty, not just when we're seeing drought, is as well a priority for me. So, I would just encourage that partnership between our nonprofits and our city to really look at conservation issues and implementing, you know, more stringent programs and encouraging our residents to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
As an ecological element that we need to preserve as public stewards, water, land, air, sea, mountains. I think important water conservation programs need to be implemented in the city of Santa Barbara and with the community stakeholders, because that's an issue no one talks about, water. Water is the essence and our lifeblood of our substance and our bodies. We have to look at the water fund that we have incorporated within the city, look how the administration is operating it, the maintenance of it. But we also need to look at the capital and future acquisitions of programs that, or development of structures, to create more water conservation programs and to create more water resources. Also, we have to look at recycled wastewater to see how we could use that in the beautiful landscapes of the city of Santa Barbara, and that's an important conduit. And then with the local dams surrounding our communities, work with those administrations to make sure that they're improved and have good efficiency.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Well, the city has a very well-thought-out, long-term water strategy. It starts with Lake Kachuma and Lake Gibraltar, and obviously, when we have localized drought conditions like we've been experiencing, those supplies go down first, but they're supplemented by access to the state water system. So, we have the diversification geographically of having that water supply. And then ultimately, we have two other insurance policies, which is the groundwater, that the city doesn't tap until we really need that. So, that's our local safety net. And then ultimately, we do have the permits for the desalination plant. It is an expensive alternative, but the permitting is there to put that plant back into operation. It's a matter of taking some of the funding from the Water Division and using that for that project if we need to get to that point. So, I think we're actually, despite, you know, folks' justifiable concern about the situation at Lake Kachuma, the city has planned ahead and is implementing the steps to protect our water supply.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Mr. Hart's right. It looks worse than it is if you go out to Lake Kachuma. It looks like we're about to become a desert. But we are two years into a six-year plan for drought. That's the way we work, no matter, since the last spill over the Bradbury Dam, we start pretending that we are in a drought condition. That's a conservative way of dealing with what's always been a problem here, which is lack of water. We also have well water. But we are managing it well. Yes, we could do with rain, no question. Yes, state water is absolutely vital. Our rates, every time, you know, your rates go up, that's a painful situation, but the intent there is to get each and every one of us to reduce, at least on the top end, our water usage. So, I think we are in good shape. Of course, if we don't have any rain for years, we're going to be in trouble. But right now, don't be afraid.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
Well, I've heard so much there that I question and don't like. I think, obviously, the philosophy of how we use water in this town will change in the next 50 years, and we're probably living well beyond our means right now. I'm probably an equal abuser with everybody else. You heard desal. Desal should never happen in this town because it casts a huge negative environmental footprint for any use of desal. There's currently 15 or 16 desal permits running from San Diego up through Monterey Bay in the process, and they're going to be hard fought. The backup net you've heard of use of wells in the city of Santa Barbara is water of marginal quality, and it also then imposes the problem of saltwater infiltration the more you use the wells, and that causes other problems. I believe that the future will hold building codes that allows and almost mandates, if it doesn't mandate for gray water use and storage tanks in new construction, and I think those are the directions we should be going.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer.
I think water quality is extremely important in Santa Barbara. As a surfer, I'm also concerned with our seawater quality. Now, there's a little island of land that is surrounded by city limits, and it's called the Los Pecidos Valley. There are, I don't know, a whole housing tract up there on the top of the hill. If you're going down Los Pecidos, it'd be on your right. And these homes are not on the city's water system. They have septic tanks, which means every time it rains, they wash their stuff into the ocean. This is another reason to use the hated A-word, annexation, to bring these folks into the city limits on the sewer system so that their waste product goes into our wonderful treatment plant and is properly discharged and meets the water quality limits that state is set. So, again, I think we need to look at this as a holistic approach to water quality. And again, septic systems may have worked in the 1970s, but now they are terribly dirty, and they are responsible for some of the beach closers that we get, I believe. And I think that we should look at changing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Landecker.
Well, first, I would say that I was on the Water Commission and on the city council in the last major drought that we went through. So, I hope I don't need that expertise, but at least I have that experience to bring to the council. The fact is, yes, we did build a desalination plant. It was meant to be an emergency supply for when we get to that sixth year and we really need it. It is expensive water. It does have environmental issues. But the fact is that we do have the infall. We have the ability to put a plant online relatively quickly. Unfortunately, the city sold off the pumps, which I don't quite understand, so it's going to be expensive for us to go there if we get to the emergency. Ms. Wiscombe, in addition to talking about rain dances, talked about state water. They are about equally useful when we're in a drought situation. The fact is, already, we're only at 35% of our state water allocation. Next year, it will be less. If we get to a drought situation, it will probably be zero. So, we can't rely on state water to help us. Time.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
First, I want to point out that I do my part. Having been deployed multiple times, I take about like 12-second showers. So, I try, and I also apologize to the people next to me.[1281.65][1281.65](LAUGHING). That said, I think that there's two things that we can talk about. One, I think that we need to, in all future considerations for density, realize that if we have water problems now, adding the 20,000 people, according to Mr. Hart, that thrive up here every day to live here, is going to impact our water, and there's only so much that you can limit. Secondly, we'll talk about the desal plant. I realize that there are some environmental impacts, but here's the thing. Having it as an emergency, knowing that it's not something we can bring online overnight, I'd like for us to think outside the box. Why don't we fire up the desal plant and then contract with a company that will come in and bottle, and instead of us drinking Crystal Geyser or some other Perrier, we have sparkling and tap water, or excuse me, flat water that has the Santa Barbara label on it that we can then send out, continuing to brand our community, and then have that backup still running and paid for.
All right. Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you. I thought that Frank and Greg covered the long-term water supply plan well. We do have a six-year plan in place that I have some confidence in. I respectfully disagree with David on the state water pipe. That pipe is a hook up to the network of pipes throughout the state that can bring water in. It may not be state water. It could be we're buying a farmer's water to supplement our supply and basically giving that farmer a profit. That's how the water marketing will work. I'm still going to be very leery. We have a climate change going on, and as the years get hotter and drier, I'm going to, that six-year plan may not be a six-year plan. So, I'm going to be very gun-shy as we, if we do have a continued drought, to perhaps import, to buy some more water in this water marketing I'm talking about, just because I do not, I do not want to return to that problem that we had 25 years ago.
Thank you. We've used almost two hours for this program, and I think it's time to give the candidates their time for a closing statement. They are given two minutes, and we're going to start with Ms. Sally.
Well, thank you so much for giving up your warm Saturday, maybe one of the last of the season, to come here and get to know all of us. Again, it lies in direct connection with what Legal Women Voters does, which is to register and educate voters. I'm so inspired by my community to run, been able to work on the ground, on the front lines alongside many of you in advocacy roles, both in environmental, health and preservation, human health services, and really at the city level, working through the Parks and Recreation Commission to protect our most valued residents, our youth and our adults, and making sure that, moving into the future, that those programs are reinstated, because they, again, were the first to be cut during the recession. And that just shows a lack of investment in our community and our future. And I'm looking forward to bringing new energy and fresh ideas to the council. I have that experience of, again, just being inspired by my community, and leading is sort of the next step. We've all been, you know, advocating for things, asking our city council for initiatives and policy that represents our goals and our desire to move into the future sustainably, both in economy and environmentally. Let's put one of our own on the council that we know will support our values and our policy. My platforms are safe and vibrant neighborhoods, safe and efficient transportation, and a healthy economy, and sustainable environment. And that really is inspired by the work that I've been able to do in this community. I'm an east-side renter. I live with my husband. I moved from Lompoc, where we had chickens and acreage, to a modest one-bedroom downtown because I worked at the CEC on Chapala and Annapamoo and looked forward to riding my bike and walking and being part of this great vibrant city. And I know so many of us want that, and we want to have a say in the identity that our community and city shapes today and for tomorrow. So, Megan Diaz, Ali, please make me one of your three votes this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
Thank you very much. Muchas gracias a los civiles que están mirando. Voten por Cruzito Herrera Cruz. Yo soy número seis en el folleto de correo de las elecciones. Thank you, everybody, for being here and present. Thank you for everybody at this table. My name is Cruzito Herrera Cruz. I am number six on the mail ballot election. Please vote for me. So, I would definitely, would be honored to be a public servant. As a kid and a young man in this community, growing up, my overall education, my work in social service experience, and my career as a young man in working with our community in social service, has given me the opportunity and the political science training, like her at UCSB, Go UCSB Galchos, and Vaquero, Santa Barbara City Vaquero. It taught me the passion to get involved in the community. I've been studying the social service components within our community and the dilemmas happening, and that's why I believe in, one, adult youth services to curtail the society problems and the challenges that we face at this moment as a community. Two, to increase the public infrastructure of the city of Santa Barbara, low, moderate-income housing. I call it equity. We have to equitably build a little bit up. We're built out, we should build up reasonably, a little bit. We shouldn't have density on the east side and west side. That's the new general plan of Santa Barbara, building on the east side and west side. That'll create density and create future problems, prognostication in the future. Please vote for Cruzito Herrera Cruz. Because I'm a local, I'm a native. Hablo español. Puedo comunicarme con la gente del barrio, de la comunidad de la mesa, la comunidad de San Roque, la comunidad de Montecito, Osiopra. ¿Hablas español? Habla con Cruzito Herrera Cruz. So, I'm just saying, I speak different languages that could be a bridge. I thank you, everybody, for appreciating and respecting the words, and I protest, we shouldn't have an Indian rain dance. The beat goes like...[1670.01][1670.01](LAUGHING).
Thank you.
But we shouldn't do it as a derogatory comment on two matched land. So, we have to be respectful of our words, please.
Mr. Hart.
I appreciate Mr. Cruz's comments.[1686.15][1686.15](LAUGHING). This has really been a great opportunity to talk with folks, to talk with all the other candidates about the issues. You have a very important choice ahead of you this November, so take your time, be very careful with that. I would very much like to represent you again on the city council. I'm very proud of the service that I delivered eight years ago as a member of the council. Look forward to that opportunity again. I have a lot of experience. I'm very optimistic about Santa Barbara. I'm very proud of our community. I think that despite the talk today about all the things that are facing us, the challenges ahead, I think we can resolve those. I think we can work together. I think that these things are doable. We have a tremendous legacy as a community of meeting those challenges, and we should be very proud of this community. If you drive around California at all, there really is no other place like Santa Barbara, and that's not an accident. That's the product of many, many people over many generations working together to solve our problems. And I think we should be proud of that, we should celebrate that, and we should just roll up our sleeves and get back to work. I'm very proud of the support that I have in this election. I've been endorsed by both of our state legislators up in Sacramento, Doss Williams and Hannah Beth Jackson, city council members Kathy Marino and Ben Grant House, all three members of the South County Board of Supervisors, Doreen Farr, Janet Wolfe, Salud Carvajal. I have the support of the Police Officers Association, the Firefighters Association, the Sierra Club, the Democratic Party, the Democratic Women of Santa Barbara County, the Cause Action Fund. There's no other candidate sitting up here today that has that broad range of support. So, I would very much like the opportunity to represent you again. You'll have my firm commitment to be open and accessible and work together to improve Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Well, as an incumbent, you better run on your record, so I'd like to walk you through the record, starting on Milpus, if I could, where we made pedestrian improvements that have, we hope, made the streets safer. pedestrian improvements that have, we hope, made the streets safer. Then moved out to Cabrillo Boulevard, where we used to have 20 unsightly RVs parked. Now there are none there. We improved, whether you like it or not, as a work of art, the chromatic gate. If nothing else, we can say that it's clean and painted now. Go up to Cliff Drive, we restriped that, and I think made that a lot safer. We were all worried, frankly, that it would cause traffic backup. It hasn't. People now can safely turn right or left when they get on that center refuge aisle. We added four police to the police force. We reduced the city employee population by 80, saving $8 million. We brought additional tourism here to the tune of at least $8 million with more cruise ships. And finally, and I want to really stress this, we have put in place, or in enacting, an injunction to protect people against gangs. And by that, I mean local, the populations in lower east and west side that live in fear of their neighbors because they are gang members. That's not fair. I don't want to abandon them. I want to support the injunction in any way I can as one tool to try to turn around the gang problem in Santa Barbara. Please consider voting for me, Frank Hotchkiss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you again for hosting, and I'd like to invite you to join me to help improve Santa Barbara a little bit each and every day. I'm interested in a city that's safe, clean, and welcoming to all, one that continues to honor our cultural and historical place, one that gives businesses a role in helping our quality of life. People ask me, why are you doing this? And it gives me pause now and then, but I've used this example before about the three W's, the when you join a board or a group, and that's wealth, wisdom, and work. I'm not writing a check to groups like that. I'm questionable about my wisdom sometimes at home, and I've always been the work part of that equation. Unlike some of the others up here, I'm not a member of a political party, nor am I endorsed by a political party or elected person, but I'm willing to listen and do the work. I've not been the most prolific fundraiser, but again, I'm willing to listen and do the work. I'm also not supported financially or endorsed by a city bargaining collective unit or a labor union, but I'm willing to listen and do the work. I certainly have opinions and ideas, some that you've heard today, some that you may like, some that you don't. But at the end of the day, I'm willing to listen and do the work. And I hope that you would consider voting for me for one position as City Council. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you for your attention this afternoon. Hablabos español también, Mr. Cruz. And dobre den to all those that speak Russian in the audience as well, and chao to those that speak Italian. What else? Konichiwa? Anyways. If you want a council member that is honest and straightforward with what they want and what they want for the future of the city, then that's probably a good choice. If you're happy with the way things are, then you already know who you're going to vote for. And what experience do I have? But I am a business owner, a business owner who's employed homeless people in this town and knows that situation better than anyone else. Someone who has leadership ability and has shown that for many years in this town by the things that I've done. Wouldn't it be great if every house in town had their gas lines taken out and replaced by windmill and solar power like mine was? I think that is a great vision for the future of Santa Barbara. And I do believe that it's time for Santa Barbara to grow a little bit. I think that we've had slow growth in Santa Barbara for a long time, and it's resulting in some of the issues we've set up here, lack of affordable housing, lack of choice in our health care. And it's time that we look to the future. Now, if you're my Facebook friend, you've already seen the map that I put up from the city of Portland that has the different decades of planning that they have done and how to grow their city. And it's irresponsible of us not to grow the city for the future generations. I don't know about you, but now there's a new Santa Barbara resident in my house, and I've got to think about, where is she going to live now? Where is she going to go? So I think it's time we add some youth and someone who's had some experience on the state level, on the federal level, you know, that can bring some environmental stewardship and leadership to Santa Barbara that we haven't seen in the current council. I think that the environmental record of the current council is a little lame. I think they could have done a lot more with the great opportunities that we have. And that's what I think Santa Barbara can show, is that we have an international stake in showing leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Landecker.
I've heard several people say, vote for me in November. I want to remind people that by the time this show, if you want to call it that, is aired on local TV, people will probably have their ballots in their hands. Today's October 5th. The ballots go out on October 7th. People can be voting by October 8th or 9th. So it's happening very soon. Of course, I want people to vote for me, but why is that? The job of the city council is not to get, to do all of the things that have been talked about here. That's what we have a staff, a city administrator for. What the job of the city council is, is to reflect the values of the people of Santa Barbara and bring those values to decision-making and leadership about the city. I believe I reflect the values of most of the people of Santa Barbara, and I have experience in those areas. I think the first value is a love for the natural environment, the environment that starts at the ocean and goes to the mountains and that goes from one side to the other of Santa Barbara. I have been the executive director of the Environmental Defense Center for the last six years. Before that, spent 25 years within the Citizens Planning Association, working on environmental issues. I've been committed to that. The second value is the human environment. That is not just the beautiful architecture of Santa Barbara, but taking care of each other, being a place where nonprofits thrive. I've been the executive director of the Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics, delivering health care to those who need services among us. I think that's a value that's respected and important in this town, and I have the ability to work with nonprofits. The last piece, as I said at the beginning, is business and the importance of a strong economy. I've run a business, I've run a lot of organizations, I've been the treasurer of no less than a dozen nonprofits in this town. I do understand, basically, economics and how finance works, and I ask to have the opportunity to try to straighten things out a little bit in City Hall. Please vote for David Landecker for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
And before we start, I know this is going to sound naive, but I'm assuming you're doing a Spanish-language translation in the back. I could see the look of relief on your face when Mr. Cruz and Mr. Kramer spoke for a second. That's probably your first break all day, so having worked with translators last year for a whole year, I know what that's like. You know, I've lived in Santa Barbara here for a decade. It's the only place I've ever called home. I'm not running for city council because of the wonderful pay. I'm not running for city council because we get invited to all the parties, although I'm not sure if that's true or not. I'm running because I've had a life of service. You know, ever since I was a little kid, my parents have instilled in me that value of constantly serving your community, whether it's shoveling the elderly neighbor next door, her the snow from her driveway, mowing a lawn, going out and building houses over the summer for the homeless, whether it's been working for nonprofits or actually going to the real front lines and serving in the military. You know, the whole purpose of my life has always been to give back to my community. And I want to give back to Santa Barbara, because, yes, we do have our problems, but this is the greatest city on earth. I really believe that. I think the purpose of a city council member, and I'll sort of add on to what Mr. Landecker said, we're a representative government, and how do you represent people? Well, you do need to understand their values, but we're here to listen. And having walked to thousands upon thousands of your doors and knocked and had most of you telling me to go away, and I will sit here and say that those that have talked with me, I've heard you. What I bring here is not something that I didn't come with a pre-formed agenda. It's what you've told me we need. We need a responsive government, and I look forward to sitting on city council and being available whenever you need me. And I look forward to making sure that your needs are met because that is what city council is for. It is to act as that liaison between the administration and you. Thank you so much, and please vote Jason Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out today to share in this forum. I'm proud of the four years that I have served on council, and I'm grateful for the many years that I've had before that to learn about our city and to learn about our region so that I can be, bring those years of experience to the work I do each day. When I came onto council, the international economy was in a nosedive, and we did not know, you know, when that dive was going to stop. And I'm really proud of the fact that we were able to manage these reduced income, and we just didn't know how low it was going to go. We were able to establish priorities, keep our police and fire forces at full strength during a very difficult time. And we established a tone of collaboration. As you know, this council has a wide range of philosophies represented there. And we are not going to, those philosophies are not going to change, but we worked together to accomplish what we could. Plan Santa Barbara had been going on for years, had been in gridlock. We were able to find a way to put together a package that we could all deal with and get a unanimous vote. Last week, we had a plastic bag ban come to the city of Santa Barbara. That broad range of philosophies voted unanimously to ban plastic bags. I think that speaks to the trust and the comity that we have performed as a group. My local knowledge, I think, has been particularly useful, such things as the hydroelectric plant, which has been sitting fallow for 15, 20 years. I knew about it. It's now about to be started up, and will be providing electricity for 250 homes with no carbon footprint. So I have the local knowledge to bring together some local resources. Please vote for me in this election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiskom.
Thank you again to the League, and thanks for all of you for coming here today and listening to us. I think serving on the city council is an awesome responsibility, and it requires skills and it requires experience. We live in an incredible place. I think we all agree on that. And we have special qualities that need to be protected and preserved. These are qualities that are essential to our quality of life, our sense of place, and our economic vitality to carry us forward into the future. We also have issues that are going to require long-term solutions, successful solutions, cost-effective solutions, and we need to work on those. I have a dual career. I spent 17 years in the finance industry in New York and another 15 years as a landscape architect and public project manager in Seattle, Washington. I believe that I bring a unique skill set. I also spend my time here volunteering, and it's almost a full-time job for me, volunteering here in Santa Barbara to make our city a better place. In my finance career, I learned financial analysis, and I also learned economic trends, which are very helpful. In my career as a landscape architect and public project manager, I managed multimillion-dollar projects using public dollars, and they were long-term projects. And I bring a skill set that brought community engagement into the process, and I believe that that is an essential quality for any city council member, that we have community engagement. I am not beholden to any political party, but only to the residents of Santa Barbara, and I will work full-time and do the best job I can possibly do to represent our residents, our distinct neighborhoods on all the issues that we face. Thank you, and I hope to have your vote.
All right. We thank all the volunteers who are here this evening, Larry Nimmer of Nimmer Productions for videotaping. Jose Luis Saleta for his Spanish translation. And Gary Atkins for sound. This forum will be seen on Channel 17 with a schedule on sbchannels.tv. There's also a link to the forum on the local League website, lwsantabarbar.org. And there's also, if you want to know more about the election, there's the League's election website, smartvoter.org. Information materials from the candidates is on the back table, also membership information for the League of Women Voters and information about Santa Barbara Village. Residents at age 18 and older are invited to join the League of Women Voters to participate in forums such as this and other civic actions. We thank our candidates this evening, and you can applaud them. We appreciate your drive and commitment to serve our community, and we thank our audience for joining us. And one more bit of information, there is a youth council-sponsored forum on Monday, October 14th, at 5:30. I assume it's here? Okay. At the Davis Center, Louise Laurie Davis Center. And you need to be prepared to vote because, as has been said, the ballots are scheduled to be sent out in two days. So have a good evening. I'm losing my voice. I didn't talk.[1787.51][1787.51]